Good evening, good evening fellow commissioners, staff. We have live audience and people who are watching our meeting tonight. I will call to order the regular planning commission meeting of December 3rd, 2025. If you will please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. People rise, left hand over your heart. Very big.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Ms. Cunha, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you Chair. Commissioner Al?
Present.
Commissioner Chauhan?
Present.
And Chair Reyes?
Here.
Okay, it's noted for the record that Commissioner Javeri, or Vice Chair Javeri and Commissioner Sirdi are absent. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Cunha. For our next on the agenda is presentation of four alpha. And I would like to call on Ms. Cunha again to introduce our speaker and the presentation.
Yes, thank you Chair Reyes and members of the planning commission. Tonight under agenda item number four A is a present, is a review and consideration by the commission of an informational presentation by the public works department regarding the proposed water and sewer rate adjustments. The presentation for this item will be given by director of public works and city engineer Alvin Papa along with assistant director Chris Cubert. At this time, I will turn your attention to Mr. Papa and Mr. Cubert. Thank you.
All right, thank you Amanda. Hello, planning commissioners. Thank you for hearing us out today. My name is Alvin Papa. I am the director of public works slash city engineer for the city of Saritos. Today I have with me Chris Cubert. He is our assistant director of public works. And today we will be presenting the proposed Prop 218 water and sewer rate adjustments. So what we've been doing recently is for, in the effort of transparency, we've been going to all the various boards and commission and giving them this presentation to increase public awareness on the item. So if you don't mind going to the next slide, Chris. And just wanted to let you guys know, this is a newer presentation. You know, originally we're going through presenting the water rates, the proposed schedule and the changes. But one thing that's come through, through the various public outreach that we've had is that residents wanted to know more about what are our rates paying for. So today I will be leading the, the beginning part of the presentation to talk about the water infrastructure and the sewer infrastructure, the current status and condition of that infrastructure and the long-term needs. And then when I'm done with that, I'm going to kick it over to Chris and he's going to talk about the finances. Now how are we going to pay for all of these needs and what are we proposing to change in our current water rates to ensure that we can keep providing reliable and safe water service? Then after that he'll, he'll turn it back to me. I'll talk a little bit about the next steps and schedule and we'll open it up for questions. And so we'll start off with the first slide. If you look up on the screen, this is a photo of our wells. So with regards to our water infrastructure, the city of Saritos, we have four groundwater wells. Three of them are active and one is inactive. So with regards to our system, most of the groundwater that, that, or most of the water that our people use comes from groundwater. These wells go 700 to 1,000 feet deep underground to serve a city of 50,000 residents. These wells are getting aged and they do need some help. Currently, we pump 100% of our water demand out of the ground. And we, we do that by pumping water out of the ground, serving it to our residents. To do that, we have to pay the water replenishment district out in Lakewood. We have to pay them a replenishment assessment of $454 per acre foot. So for those of you that are not familiar, an acre foot, just picture a football field, one foot filled to, with water, one foot deep. That's one acre foot. We pay $454. In the event of a well failure, if we're not able to do that, we have to purchase import water. That water, we buy from the metropolitan water district of Southern California. For short, we call them the MET. Sometimes you'll hear the term MWD. They, they deliver that water to us and we have intermediary agency called the Central Basin Water District. We purchase the water through them and they get the water from MET. The cost of that water right now is $1,565 per acre foot. And starting in January, that, that number jumps up to $1,698 per acre foot. And the reason I'm talking about this is because these wells that we have, these, these wells that are pumping our water, they allow us to buy the, the water at $454 an acre foot. If they go down, we're buying it from the state. That comes from the state water project all the way from Mount Shasta that brings it down here. Or from the Colorado River and that gets transported here. The water is not cheap. It's imported. So that cost of $1,698 per acre foot, that's 254% more than what we're paying. So it's very important that we keep these wells in service. So I'm going to talk about each of these wells in detail. There, there are four, as I mentioned, three are active. So we have C1 well. This was drilled in 1966. This is located over by the Aria Apartments in the back. You can kind of see it off the freeway. It's 60 years old and that well has a casing that is, I believe it's 765 feet deep. Yep, correct. It's 765 feet deep. The remaining service life on that casing is six years. So in six years, the, the technical service life is done. So that's an issue. If that, if that casing collapses, then we have to buy that import water I talked about. And so this is one third of our water supply from this one well. And if you can imagine like a metal straw going 765 feet deep, soaked in water, rusting over the past 50 years. One day it's, it's just not going to be serving us anymore. And so I, I think a lot of residents, the reason I'm presenting this today is that a lot of residents, I think, I don't know if they're aware that that's, it's in that condition. One thing that's also noted at the well, we do routine, routine water quality testing. There's elevated levels of arsenic and manganese in the well. So we have what are called MCLs, maximum contaminant levels. There's a level of amount of arsenic and manganese you could have in the water. We're halfway to the regulatory limit. It's, it's still, it's still within regulatory health limits. We can serve it. But you know, ultimately we want to replace the well. And that's that pipe going down. And we also want to build a treatment system to remove all the arsenic and manganese to make sure the water is cleaner than it is now. So staff completed a preliminary study back in 2024. That told, showed us the type of treatment that we needed to do at the well. And we also have $1 million for engineering design that we've started, oh, that we plan to start in 2029. So that's included in our current CIP now. And the reason it's so far out is because that's the amount of, looking at the funding we have available. That's, that's the time where we can get funding available for that. So we have to wait five years. And the cost to build that well is between nine to 14 million dollars is the initial estimate from our consultant. So that's C1 well. C2 well is located at our corporate yard. That well was drilled back in 1977 and it's 48 years old. That well casing, which is the metal pipe that goes, goes down, it goes down 1,000 feet and it only has 10 years of service life left. You know, 10 years sounds like a long time, but really it's not. When you want to build a new well, it takes about a year, a year and a half to design, a year, a year and a half to construct. And then probably another year to permit and commission and test. So you're looking at five years from once you get funded to actually get it up and running. So 10 years seems like a long time, but it really is not. Anyway, so with regards to the water quality, it also has manganese issues. The manganese has been, we found it at above half of the MCL right now. And we found, I'm sorry, arsenic is above half the MCL. Manganese is above the MCL. But we're able to sequester the manganese. That means keep the manganese. We can keep it down with sodium phosphate. So we're doing that now as a treatment to keep serving the water. But it's, that, that will only work for so long and eventually we have to install treatment. And so we have a project planned for the C2 well. The estimated cost of it is about nine to 14 million dollars. So that will build a new well. We also need to build a new chlorine room. They have chlorine gas located on site. We want to move to liquid chlorine, which is safer. Chlorine gas is, it's a very hazardous chemical. Our staff needs hazardous training to take care of it. And if they're released, it's just very dangerous. On the contrary, using liquid chlorine, if there were a spill, it gets on the floor, we clean it up and it's, it's a lot safer to use. That project, as I mentioned, is nine to 14 million dollars. Design is estimated to be 700,000 to 1 million dollars. It should be noted that for this project, there is no funding. There's nothing programmed and we, we don't have anything in the books right now. C4 well, this is the third of our active wells. This is our largest well. This well is over by Reservoir Park. If you know where that is in the city on the west side. It was drilled in 1973 and is 52 years old. As I mentioned, this is our largest well. The well casing has about eight years of remaining service life. Looking at the water quality, that also has manganese and arsenic that we'd like to get cleaned up. But we also detected an emerging contaminant over at that site. So we are conducting regular testing to make sure that we're within regulatory limits. But ultimately we want to install treatment on that site. So planning is underway to build a treatment system, to rebuild the well, to put the treatment system and try to get that in before 2031. The cost of that project is 16 million dollars and that project is budgeted in our CIP. We've prioritized that as our number one priority right now because that is our largest producer. And then C5 well, the last of the wells is an inactive well. It was drilled back in 2001. The water levels in that area for arsenic and manganese are above the MCLs. So we 100% need to build a treatment system before we can even use it. That well casing does have 21 years of life, that's good news. But we still have to build the treatment system and a wellhead, which is where you put the pump, the housing, all the equipment that go with it. We have $5 million of funding planned in 2029. But the cost of that project is probably going to be closer to seven to 10 million. So it's not fully funded. We're going to have to try to get additional funds to complete the project. And so those are our wells. One thing that we also should be doing with our wells, that's recommended by our consultant, such engineers, is every 10 years we should be going in rehabbing the well. Kind of like a full overhaul where we look at every piece of equipment, all the rubber, replacing them in full so that we can make sure that this, this investment that we have lasts a long time. That's, that's something that we would like to do. It's a best practice, also currently not funded. We'll talk about the booster pumps. So those are the, the next two slides over there. The city's water system has two booster stations. We have the C2 booster station, which has three pumps and the C4 booster station has six pumps. The C4 booster station was built in 1977 and is 48 years old. It has six pumps and two of them are already beyond their useful service life. So that's actually basically not a good thing. We know that those pumps are going to fail any moment. But we're continuing to run them, continue to maintain them. But this is like keeping your 1960 Chevy going. One day it's just going to go kaput. So those, those pumps are still going, but it's recommended by our consultant that we replace all five pumps and all five variable frequency drives. And variable frequency drives are electronics that are connected to the pumps and they regulate how fast the pump spins. Because normally if you don't have it, the pump just goes at one speed. But for, to improve efficiency, the variable frequency drive makes it so you can run the pump slower or faster at different pressures. The replacement effort to, to replace all of the pumps and VFDs is probably $300,000 right now is what we estimate. Next slide. Reservoirs. The city has three reservoirs. We have C2 reservoir east, C2 reservoir west. And then if you're looking at Reservoir Park there, C4 reservoir is underground. So we have about $24 million of reservoir capacity. The reason that these reservoirs were important is because they help make sure that we have adequate water supply for firefighting. They also help us in, in times of outages to make sure that we can supply water through those outages and also for emergencies. Between all three reservoirs, all those reservoir, reservoirs, C2 and C4 are 47 and 48 year, I'm sorry. East and west for C2 is 47 and 48 years old and the C2 reservoir west is 55 years old. You know, overall, the reservoirs have cracks in them on the floor. There's cracks in the roof. On the C4 reservoir, there's cracks in the gunite. They need to be sealed. The maintenance work to do that is about $50,000. It hasn't been included in the CIP yet. But we're looking to try to fund that in the near future. One thing a consultant recommended is that we install cathodic protection. So that's a way to protect the reservoirs from corrosion, but we don't have an estimate for that work. Next slide. These are water connections and interconnect. We have one major interconnect with the metropolitan water district. That's the C46 interconnect you see up there. That's how we get that import water. And then we have 13 neighboring interconnections. So we use those as in case of an emergency, we can get water from our neighbors such as Lakewood or Golden State Water. You can go to the next one if you need to talk too much about that. Oh, pipelines. So we have 121 miles of pipeline, I'm sorry, 172 miles of pipeline. Of that, and most of those were installed in the 1950s. About 121 miles of that, so that's 70% is between 50 to 60 years old. And right now our water division, they respond to an average of about four to six emergency leaks a month. So they're out there, they're repairing leaks. And the reason it's important to, for me to mention that is because this leads, this leads us to understand that the system is aging, it's under stress and we need to start redoing long, long-term pipeline repair to ensure we don't have emergencies. So our engineering consultant has, has suggested we replace one mile of pipe a year. The cost of doing that, and we had 20, 20 different pipeline projects planned, that's about 16.7 million dollars. So three point, we should be spending 3.3 million dollars a year to prevent emergencies from happening for these pipes breaking. Currently, that project is not funded. This is on the unfunded project list in our CIP within the budget in appendix C. One thing to also note is that residents at homes, I don't know if you, like when we go, when we do flushing, sometimes we open a hydrant to clean out the pipes, residents end up with brown water at their homes. You know, your, your whites turn brown, residents are upset, it looks like coffee. Well, what you're seeing is that's rust. So we have about seven miles of steel and iron pipe in our system. What you're seeing is rusting of that, that steel and iron pipe in the system. So our pipes are corroding and that stuff needs to get repaired. So one thing that the consultants recommended is cathodic protection. And so that's where, basically that's a system that protects steel and iron pipes from rusting further. So they use electricity and sacrificial anode is what they call it. Anyways, it's a system that prevents the system from rusting. They estimate that it's going to cost somewhere between two to seven million dollars to do that. But we would need to do a feasibility estimate of about $100,000 to, to firm up that estimate. Currently, there's no funding allocated for cathodic protection either. Next. Water meters, we have, see what we got. We have over 15,400 water meters. One thing to know is that we read all those moderate, all those water meters in person. They're manually read. So one suggestion is that we do that, we install automatic meter infrastructure so we can do all of that electronically. We save on labor costs and we can get data in real time, but that's a 15 or 14 million dollar effort. So currently we're working with Weldon consultants. They're going to do a no fee phase one assessment to show us the feasibility of doing that. We have a bunch of water, water laterals in the city. We have 135 plastic water laterals that need to be replaced and that are leaking. The estimated cost for repairing those laterals is 1 million dollars. We don't have money in the budget to fix them. So the way it works now is when they break, as part of our operations budget, we go out, we go and we fix them on emergency basis. So if you ever fix anything on emergency, it's more costly and more expensive. So our, you know, our hope is that we can have funding to fix those proactively and we're not dealing with emergencies. And near the end, with regards to water valves, we have 2,486 water valves in the city. Most of them are over 50 years old. The cost to repair the ones that we need are about $750,000. I don't know if you guys remember on Bloomfield, there was a time it was shut down for a time earlier this year. We had emergency, we had emergency water valves that broke. We're out there, they were turning the valves and basically they popped off because they were rusted. So we ended up spending all, over $100,000 to do that emergency repair on valves that cost $20,000. Can move on to the next slide. And then sewer infrastructure. I know this is getting long, but I want to be able to share everything with you guys. So with regards to our sewer system, the city of Saritos, we collect sewer. We collect the sewage from, from homes and businesses and then we transport that to the LA County sanitation districts. They take that sewage and they bring that over to the Los Coyotes Water Reclamation Plant over there by the Ironwood 9 Golf Course where they treat it and then it gets reused as reclaimed water. We have about 146 miles of sewer pipe, 3,200 manholes and six sewer pump stations. The pipes, most of the pipes in the city are made of vitrified clay pipe. So clay pipe lasts over 100 years old. It can last over 100 years if we take care of it well. And we do have some steel pipe that has a shorter lifespan of about 40 to 50 years. You know, just talking big picture, we have, we have an estimate that looked at, you know, our sewer needs. They recommend that we replace about 3,335 feet of sewer pipe. That's about 2.6 million dollars of sewer that needs to be replaced and upsized now. Otherwise, they, they foresee potential sewer overflow. They also recommended that we do closed circuit television inspection of about seven miles of sewer pipe where we're having to do repeated cleaning. So if we're having to repeatedly clean a sewer pipe, we know there's an issue. It could be tree roots, it could be oil and grease, it could be a crack in the pipe, something's wrong. And that's why we're cleaning it continuously. So they recommend we run a camera down, figure out what's wrong with the pipe so we can figure out a repair. That cost is about $120,000 and that's currently not budgeted. And then lastly of our six pump stations, the consultants recommended we replace all 12 pumps. All of the, our pumps are beyond their useful service life and the cost for replace says about $75,000. But that has not been budgeted due to budgeting challenges. And with regards to staff recommendations of that 146 miles of sewer pipe. We believe we, it's best practice to inspect that sewer pipe every five years. So recommending sewer CCTV inspection of all of that pipe and relining of the manholes. The cost to do that work is 2.4 million dollars to inspect all of the sewer pipe. And that's a best management practice and that also helps ensure that we stay in compliance with the state water board, our sanitary sewer permit. And then $8 million to line the pipes and manholes. So as, as I mentioned, that clay pipe can last up to 100 years. A lot of it, you know, some of it's beginning to crack. You have intrusion through where the pipes connect together. Tree roots can get in there. Relining is really cheap. They basically put a sock through the, the pipe. They blow it up with the steam and it makes like a new pipe inside. So we recommend over the course of 10 years, relining the entire city and we think we can do it for about $8 million. And the reason I, I bring that up is, was it last week or two weeks ago? Last week there was a sewer spill on Shoemaker and College Place. A lot of people don't know about it. Because you know, we go, Public Works goes out there, we work with our team, we get it cleaned up. But yeah, there was a sewer spill there. We don't know the reason. There was no inspection on the pipe. We just know that there was a manhole sewage flowing onto the street. We got a report and we went to go clean it up. We had to work with the state water board. We worked with our contractor Empire to go clean it up. We still don't know what's wrong with the pipe. But we know it could either be grease, it could be calcium buildup that makes the pipe smaller because that calcium builds. Could be true. Could be true, we don't know. But we do know that having sewer spills in the city is an issue, and that's, that's a sign that we need to start doing something. One thing I forgot to mention before I close this out and kick it over to Chris is the C four well that I talked about earlier, our biggest well that we're working on. There's actually a hole in the casing. So we're getting gravel and rock in, into the casing, and we're pulling up sand. So as we're trying to serve the city water, we have sand in the water, and so we've actually had to shut the well off for the past, was it like a month, two months? Two months. For the past two months, we've been having to shut the well off and just run it intermittently. And we're buying that import water I talked about now, because we can't run the well at full speed, because we're going to be pulling up sand. So we'll run it for a little bit, the moment we start seeing sand, we turn it off. Or run it for a little bit, when we see sand. So we're buying import water a couple of times a week. So that's just a little bit about the water and sewer infrastructure needs, condition and needs. I'm going to turn it over to Chris, and he'll talk more about the water and sewer rates that are needed to fund all of this infrastructure that needs help and the projects that I've talked a little bit about earlier.
Thank you, Alvin. Good evening, commissioners. So water and sewer rates have stayed the same since July twenty twenty-one. The city has raised rates ten percent each year from twenty fourteen to twenty-one, but those rate increases did not pay for major system upgrades, which includes capital improvement projects. To keep service levels steady, the city has depended on significant general fund support. In October twenty twenty-three, the city wrote off twenty-four point three million dollars in general fund loans to the water and sewer funds. Since then, the general fund has continued to cover costs that water and sewer funds cannot support. By the end of this fiscal year, we expect another eight point nine million dollars will be used to support daily water and sewer needs. The support has kept rates low, but it cannot continue. It is not a stable long-term plan. The system needs a new rate structure that builds financial strength and keeps system reliable. Because of this, the city council has asked staff to begin a formal rate study. Staff hired water resources economics in February of this year to complete the study. The original plan included reclaimed water, but that part is on hold due to an emergency project the city is talking with Los Angeles County Sanitation Districts. The goal of the rate study is to develop a five-year rate plan that allows water and sewer rates to stand on their own without ongoing support from the general fund. This slide shows the proposed water fund capital improvement program over the next five years. The total cost is about twenty-three million dollars, or twenty-five point three million after four percent annual inflation. We initially proposed forty-three million dollars in projects, but reduced the plan to minimize rate impacts. We did that by focusing only on critical and essential projects that allow us to serve self-reliable clean water. The main focus is building and upgrading our water wells. The first project, which Alvin talked about earlier, is the C four well, which includes a new well and treatment system at a cost of approximately sixteen million dollars. Once C four is near completion, we plan to finish design and start construction of the C five well near the end of this cycle in fiscal year twenty-nine thirty. These investments ensure reliable and sustainable water supply for our community. This slide outlines the general, general fund support needed for both the status quo, or no rate structure rate adjustment, or an approved rate adjustment which we're proposing. Under the status quo plan in red, our rates stay the same. The water fund would need about sixty-eight point nine million dollars in general fund over the next five years. This amount is more than the city's projected general fund reserves and is not a stable path forward. The proposed rate plan in blue would lower the need for general fund help and phase it out over four years. Under this plan, the general fund would provide nine point five million dollars in total support, and the water fund would be fully self-funded by July one, twenty twenty-nine. This comparison shows why a new rate structure is important. Water rates need to pay for daily operations and system upgrades. Nearly all water agencies follow this method to stay stable, reduce the general fund support, and keep their water systems reliable. This approach supports policy direction provided by city council. This slide shows the proposed five-year rate plan. It was built to meet Proposition two eighteen rules and standard industry practice. Staff reviewed future revenues, costs, and needed system upgrades to make sure the water fund reaches its minimum reserve levels by the end of the five-year period. The plan includes yearly changes to both the fixed meter charge and rate for water use. These changes would be effective February one, twenty twenty-six. Fixed meter charges were updated based on meter size to improve fairness and match American Waterworks Association guidance. The plan also removes the minimum water unit, so every gallon that is used is billed based on actual use. These updates improve equity across customers and set rates that better match the real cost to provide service. This slide compares our average home water bill to nearby cities. Our current rate is in yellow, and the proposed rate is in green. Even with the proposed changes, Cerritos will stay among the most affordable agencies in the area. The average bill for a single-family home will remain lower than many nearby systems. On the commercial side, the story is the same. Current rates are in yellow, while the proposed rates are in green. Even with the proposed changes, Cerritos will remain very competitive. The average bill for a typical commercial customer will stay within the range of nearby agencies. Now we'll move on to the sewer. Just like water, this slide identifies the status quo for sewer remaining in red and their proposed adjustments in blue as it relates to general fund support. Like the water fund, the sewer fund has relied heavily on general fund transfers. Under the status quo, or do nothing, in red, it would need twelve point one million dollars over the next five years. With the proposed sewer rates in blue, general fund support would be phased out over five years. Total transfers would be limited to three point five, or three point six million dollars, and the sewer fund would be fully self-sufficient by twenty twenty-nine. As with the water fund, the sewer fund should operate independently with rates covering all operating costs. This approach is standard in the industry, keeps the system stable, protects the general fund, and ensures long-term reliability. This slide outlines the proposed five-year sewer fund capital improvement program. The total cost is approximately three point nine million dollars, or four point three after four percent annual inflation. Like the water fund, we focused only on critical projects. Of this total, the main focus is one point two million dollars for CCTV inspection of the sewer system, followed by two point four million dollars for sewer pipe replacement. These projects ensure reliability and long-term safety of our sewer system.
Chris, do we need to take a break to fix that, or are we good?
It seems to be working now. There was a power outage over the weekend, so we know it's affected some of the equipment, and it looks like it's going out again.
So can we take a quick recess, like five-minute recess to restart the interconnection?
Yes.
Okay. Call for a five-minute recess? Okay, the regular planning commission meeting of December third, twenty twenty-one is back in session. So we will go back to Mr. Kubert's presentation. Mr. Kubert, please.
Thank you, sir. So moving on to sewer, this slide outlines the proposed five-year rate plan built to follow Prop two eighteen and industry standards. The plan starts with a larger increase in year one, then smaller steady increases in the following years. These rates will fund approximately three point nine million dollars in critical system upgrades and gradually end general fund support. Moving on to our comparisons of local cities. As you can see, our current rates are in yellow on the far left of the slide, with the proposed rates in the green. Even with the proposed changes, Cerritos will stay below the regional average. This shows the city's commitment to keeping rates affordable while moving towards self-sustaining utility. Finally, we're here to discuss a potential low-income assistance program. In response to city council direction, staff is proposing a water and sewer assistance program similar to S C E's care program, which gives income-qualified households a thirty-two point five percent discount. Eligibility is based on household size and income levels set by the CPUC. As of October twenty twenty-five, over twenty-two hundred Cerritos households are enrolled in the care program, and staff has estimated about twenty-three hundred households could qualify for budgeting purposes. Instead of a percentage discount, the program would provide a fixed bimonthly discount of forty dollars. This helps control costs and keeps the budget stable. Staff will return to city council with more details at the public hearing scheduled for January twenty-six, twenty twenty-six. And finally, discuss some information about Proposition two eighteen notices that were recently mailed out. In line with Proposition two eighteen, on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, all property owners and water and sewer customers were sent a notice of public hearing scheduled for January twenty-six, twenty twenty-six. The notice included the amount of the proposed rate changes, how the changes were calculated, the reasons for the changes, instructions for the reasons for the changes, instructions for submitting a written protest, the date and time of the hearing. All written protests must be submitted in person or mailed to the city clerk no later than 5:00 PM on Monday, January 26, 2026, or received by the city clerk before the public hearing ends on January 26, 2026. Now I'll pass it back over to Alvin. He will finish up the presentation.
Thank you, Chris. With regards to next keys and milestones up on the screen, you see a calendar of the proposed next steps. As you can see, we've already started meeting with the community. We've conducted community information sessions where we've met with the public, heard their feedback and comments. As I mentioned earlier, it's not shown on the screen, but we're going to every single board and commission to present the proposed water and sewer rate study adjustments, to give commissioners a chance to, you know, ask questions, to give multiple opportunities to the public to come here and to become more informed. You know, really, we know that this is challenging, right? We are, there's a lot of stuff that needs to get built, and it's not cheap. We do need to increase rates, and I understand that in Cerritos, rates have been low for quite some time. And now to increase them can be a shock for some folks, especially those on fixed incomes. And so, you know, we know it's a challenge, but there is also a lot of infrastructure that needs to be repaired, that needs to be fixed, and it can't be pushed off for very long. If it does get pushed off, there's a chance of something even more concerning, like sewer spills or the loss of a water supply, or even having to purchase import water at triple the rates. So we know that this is challenging. We know that a lot of residents have questions about it, and we know that you commissioners may have questions. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Staff and I, or Chris and I are here to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Papa, and thank you, Mr. Kubert, for the presentation. And before I open it to the public for hearing or for questions, I would like to open this up for our commissioners if you have any question, comments, or any concerns about presentation. Mr. Al?
Sorry. Thank you very much, Chris and Alvin, for this detailed report, and it's very informative. I have two questions. One is for Shikhan. The, in the public notice from the city and as well as in today's report, the term Prop 218 is often mentioned. What exactly does that mean? Can Shikhan, you give us a very brief just of that, what that the prop requires?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Al. So just a very, very brief primer. Prop 218 is a requirement in state law. It was a proposition that was enacted by the voters in 1996, and it essentially requires that before any sort of property-related fee or charge can be implemented by a local government, there has to be studies done, and the studies have to show that the increase is not going to be beyond the proportional cost of providing that service. There's notice provisions, there's protest requirements. So there's a variety of requirements that a local agency has to follow. They can't just unilaterally decide to enact something without following Prop 218.
Thank you very much, Shikhan. I have another question for Chris or Alvin. Basically, in your report, I see that there's a lot of projected costs for major repairs. For instance, the well, you know, replacing the wells, fixing the wells, and adding the processing equipment for C4 and so on and so forth. I don't remember if there's, there are numbers for the daily operations and minor repairs, like minor maintenance. So is that two, it seems to me that those are two separate costs. These are major build, major costs for major repairs versus the daily operations and minor repairs, like the water meters and pipes here and there.
Yes.
Do we separate those?
Yes, thank you for the question, Commissioner Al. The, with regards to the numbers that you saw on the screen, if you don't mind, Chris, go onto that screen. We did include a list of all the major capital projects that are proposed as part of this water and sewer rate increase. What you see up there is, those are actually the critical projects. That is absolutely what must get done. All the stuff that we would like to have, that I mentioned, you know, cathodic protection, replacing pipe, fixing the reservoirs, changing the VFDs, the pumps, that's not even on that list. This is absolutely what needs to get done, and the biggest number you see there is at $16 million for well four. If you look for, at C1 and C5, we push that out to the last year. We push that as far out as soon as possible, or as late as possible. And the reason it also makes sense is we want to build C4. If we get that done, then we can start working on well C5. We don't want to have more than one or two wells offline at any time because we're buying imported water. So to minimize the costs, we just, we put C4 up now. You had mentioned maintenance costs, so that's included as part of our operating budget. And the water and sewer rate study that was presented on October 27th, within that study, it showed all our operations and maintenance costs. As part of this water and sewer rate adjustment that's proposed, the adjustment looked at how much we've been spending on operations and maintenance costs, and then it accounts for inflation of the costs over the five years to ensure that as costs rise, as we know they will, that the rates will be able to support those cost increases with inflation.
Because what I'm getting at is that the current water and sewer rate, is it enough to cover the daily operations and maintenance, or is it not enough? And also, if it makes any sense, if for these big item projects, if it's a one-time investment in these major infrastructure items, wouldn't it make sense to, like, for instance, issue a bond or something instead of increasing the water bill, water rate?
Yes, I can answer that. Thank you. So the, with regards to the operations and maintenance costs, the rates that we have now, they help fund water and sewer operations, but it's not enough. We're doing the bare minimum. There's a lot of best management practice that should happen. Like I mentioned with the wells, a good maintenance practice is every 10 years, do a full rehab of the wells, keep them going. It's like doing a full tune-up of your car. We're not doing that. We should be in our sewer pipes, we should be inspecting every five years, seeing what's going on, seeing where the changes are, what the cracks are. We're not doing that. So the costs that we have are really just to fix what's breaking. And we kind of keep, we do some routine work, but it's not best management practice. With regards, you want to answer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for the question. So regards to your question about the daily operations, if you take a look at this slide right here, if we don't approve rates or change rates, we're going to need approximately $13.9 million in general fund support this year for water. Over the next five years, it's $69 million. But if the proposed rates were approved, we can significantly lower that general fund support by $3.5 million over, or sorry, $9.5 million over the four and five-year period.
Thank you.
Commissioner, if I may add to you, you mentioned a question about going up with a bond. That's not a viable option in this circumstance. Public utilities are meant to be self-sufficient and self-funding, and using a bond to kind of paper over the issue would get us revenue potentially to address some of these issues, but it still wouldn't provide a long-term fix, and the city would be incurring substantial additional debt that, quite frankly, should be covered through the water utility revenue and user fees that are paid by the ratepayers. So a bond wouldn't be a viable issue in this instance from a best-practice standpoint.
Commissioner Chowhan?
I have a couple of questions. Do we have enough water rights to meet the needs of our city as a standalone without buying from any other city?
No, we do not. We only have enough water rights to pump out half of what we need. So we regularly, on an annual basis, buy water rights from other cities for the remaining half.
And another clarification. Even though it rains and there's water in the ground, we cannot just extract the water without paying some assessments to the Metropolitan Water District?
Yes, Commissioner, that is correct. But we pay the, we can't just pump water out of the ground without paying the replenishment assessment, and that replenishment assessment is paid to the Water Replenishment District of Southern California. Otherwise, no, sometimes you hear WRD.
Yep. And the reason I say that is there's an assumption that the water's in the ground, we just take it out. No, you just cannot take it out for free. Can the existing wells be lined for you so there'd be extension on the lifespan of these wells that you've said from six to 10 years? Is there a possibility of doing small fits that would extend the life of those wells?
It is possible, but we've already lined the well. So the hole is actually in the liner, so we've already lined it once before. So it has reduced capacity, and if we line it again, we won't have the pumping capacity to serve the needs of the city. So that's our biggest challenge.
At a minimum, how many wells would we need to have running to meet the needs of our residents?
Three. So currently, we meet the needs of our citizens with three wells. The reason we're proposing well C5 is right now, our three wells are running in overdrive. Like, they're all running all the time. So picture redlining your car for a long time, like, your engine begins to take wear and tear. And so the goal is to get C5 up and running and have a more stable and resilient water supply.
You also mentioned we are approaching limits on, at some wells for the MCLs. Are those reports posted somewhere where public can view?
Yes. So on our city website, we're required by law to post the consumer confidence report. And also, every June, we come to City Council with an updated annual consumer confidence report. So as part of that agenda item, we talk about the consumer confidence report, and then there's a copy of the exhibit, and then following that council meeting, we post it on the city website.
Those are all the questions.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Chowhan. Before, no, I don't have, I don't have any question. Go ahead, Commissioner Al.
Another question is that I remember when the City Council was discussing the 2026 budget, there was a chart of historical expense, enterprise expenses and revenues. So for the last 10 or 15 years, do we have that information here when we present it to the residents? Basically, what I'm trying to get at is that over, let's say, over the last 10, 15 years, how much are we collecting from the water and sewer rates? And how much are we spending? And what is the deficit level from, let's say, 15 years ago? Especially with regard to the 10% annual increase starting 2014 to 2020. So what is the past financial situation of the water and sewer enterprise? And what is the projected? I know the projected deficit is presented here, but the historical numbers, are we going to show it to the residents?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Commissioner Al. I don't have all the detailed data, but I can give you the high level. So a couple of years ago, City Council, they wrote off about $23 million in loans to the enterprise fund. So we know that we at least had a deficit of $23 million. We know ever since those loans were written off, in addition, an additional $10 million has been spent. So I don't have the details year by year, but those are the high-level overview. With regards to looking forward over the next five years, Chris has the numbers up here. It's $68.9 million if we don't do anything for the next five years. There's going to be a $68 million deficit. That's just for water. When you add sewer, it's an $81 million deficit. And if those are not funded by adjusted water and sewer rates, the bar graph you see there in red, that is going to have to be covered by the general fund.
Thank you for that information. So just one quick comment. I think the best policy for public, for governance, for public work is transparency. And as long as we present all the actual data, actual numbers, especially the fiscal, you know, data, present that to the residents, I think people will understand. However, if we're, there are things that, for fear of, you know, protest or whatever, we try to put under the covers. That's probably not good because people will find out. And for instance, in the letter form, the city, if you compare the table one and the table three, you will notice that the rate of increase for the next five years is different. If you look at the table three, which is a, like, sample rate increase over the next five years, it basically shows that you're, for an average household, if you're paying currently 37.65, then your rate is going to double, what, no, 67.75 cents or something like that, yeah. So there's, basically, those numbers are saying that the next year after December, after February 1st, the rate is going to double, and then in two years, 2028, it's going to triple, and in four years, 2030, it's going to quadruple. But then if you look at the table one, the rate increase isn't that much. So I was discussing with another appointee, and he said, aha, I figured it out. Currently, the base charge includes 10 CCF of the water usage, but with the proposed plan, it no longer includes that. Now, if that's, and he then wrote an email to the city manager and confirmed that. So I think if that's the case, then let's make, put it on paper, and let's be honest with the residents. And if they like it, they like it. If they don't like it, they will protest. And so it is what it is, and I think honesty is the best policy, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Commissioner Chowhan.
And I'd follow up on that. That is precisely the issue. It's about, the presentation we saw today is something that probably should have been done, but it's water under the bridge. But residents are still amazed that we have rates going on. There are people that are still surprised. So I know we're doing a presentation today with pictures portraying exactly what the needs are. with pictures portraying exactly what the needs are. As a planning commissioner, yes, it is about infrastructure and supporting what we need. The issue about how to pay for it, that's a council decision. So that's where the messaging has to be really crystal clear. What will we get for the money that is being proposed? It is way steep and it is actually a sticker shock for many people. I don't think anybody has an issue with the next year's rate. But when you compare it to the end point, that's when the frustration level goes a little high. But overall, as a planning commissioner, I know that the infrastructure does need to be sustained somehow.
Thank you, Commissioner Chowhan. Do I have any more question for the commissioner? Okay. Before I open the hearing comment section to the public, I would like to read our rules here that verbal comments may be limited to three minutes per speaker, subject to the chair extending to a maximum of five minutes per speaker. With a total time allotted not to exceed forty-five minutes unless the chair extends. At this time, I have one list on the speaker. And I would like to call on Ms. Deborah Berry for, to speak on, for A, water rate.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Deborah Berry. I'm a resident at one three eight five six East Eltra Street. I've pretty much been a resident almost majority of my life, except for when I went to college. And my mother's been a resident since the seventies. I also happen to have worked in a public agency before, as in a water agency as well. I've been online, I've been on Facebook, I've seen all the protests and all the noise happening. So I came down here tonight to see the presentation. I want to thank the staff for a great presentation and the commissioners for good questions to get the information out there for the public. And I'm actually down here to support what's happening at the city. As a ratepayer, I don't want to have to pay higher rates. But I'm also realistic about wanting to make sure that we ensure we have proper infrastructure in our city. If not for the rates, how are we going to pay for it? You're absolutely correct. A bond is not an appropriate way to fund this rate. This should be paid by ratepayers. So I just wanted to come down here tonight. I was expecting to see a full room considering all the noise that's online. So if the people that are on Facebook are at home watching online, I encourage them to come down here and actually watch the presentation to have an understanding of what the infrastructure needs are in our city. I mean, yes, I don't want to pay more for our water bill, but I sure as heck do not want unsafe water. I don't want dirt coming up in my water, right? I don't want to have to pay extraordinary emergency expenses when the pipe blows up in the middle of the street, right? So just like in our home projects or anything else, it's going to cost ten times much in the future or on an emergency's basis versus making the investments now. So again, I just came out here to voice my support. And also because again, I expected to see a full room considering the noise. So again, thank you very much. I appreciate the hard work that's gone into the presentation, to the projections. I know there's a lot of work that goes behind all of this and the Prop two eighteen. And I just came down here to voice my support. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. If anybody wants to speak, they can just move out the mic, make sure you introduce yourself, address and speak to the, to the issue. Thank you.
I would like five minutes, please.
Go ahead. Five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners, staff, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. My name is Robert. I've lived in Cerritos for twenty-five years. My wife was born and raised here, so she has me beaten by a couple of years. I, I want you to know that I am very, very against the proposed water rate increase. Please allow me a moment to tell you why. Firstly, I think the increase is far too much, far too fast. According to table three of the notice, the rates will go from about sixty dollars for a sample home bi-monthly to about two hundred sixty dollars for a sample home bi-monthly. So it goes from about thirty dollars a month to about one hundred thirty dollars a month. That's an increase of one hundred dollars a month roughly. That is roughly one thousand two hundred dollars a year extra over and above. And even for people getting this discount of forty dollars, they'd still be paying on average ninety dollars a month eventually. That's a tripling of their rates. Everyone else will have a quadrupling of their rates. The people who get the discount will be paying still an extra sixty dollars a month, which is an extra seven hundred twenty dollars a year. And the people who don't will be paying an extra one thousand two hundred dollars a year. That's a lot of money. Secondly, that rate apparently is permanent. I saw no indication in the notice that it would ever be phased out. So that's one thousand two hundred dollars a year extra for the rest of my life. I, I don't want to pay that. I don't know anybody who wants to pay that. Thirdly, the notice, as you know, is disingenuous. It assumes that I'm voting yes unless I protest. It puts a burden on me to protest. It's a, it's a passive yes, assumed acceptance unless I protest, unless I sign the form and mail it in. I think that's unfair. I think that's wrong. I'd like you to consider an, an alternative scenario, a hypothetical or a counterfactual, if you will. What if the city council wanted us to return that form, really wanted us to? What if they needed us to return that form in order for this to pass? Things would have looked a lot different. Firstly, it wouldn't have come in a plain envelope. That envelope would have been labeled important, please vote, we need your support, we need clean water, help us. Secondly, it would have been translated into multiple languages. And thirdly, and most importantly, it would have had a return mailer, an envelope. The current mailer had none of those things. Most of the people I know threw it, threw it away. They thought it was junk mail. So I, I think it was done wrongly. I don't know if it was done legally. I'll leave that to the lawyers. But certainly it, it violates even the minimum standards of basic human decency. Before I came here tonight, I checked the city's website and that notice, that six, six pages were not on the city's website. It was not posted there anywhere. One of the things I'd like to see, see the city do, if they really want to make a good faith showing that they actually want to inform residents and business owners and not hope to pull one over on everyone, is to make sure they are putting out information on the city's social media, website and print media. At a minimum, it would include the sample table three. Unless, of course, this is wrong, in which case it should be corrected, please. Fourthly, let me just point out the obvious. The city has had a budget of about one hundred million dollars for the past several years. One hundred million. That's a lot of money. Last year or this fiscal year, I think they're spending one hundred twenty-five million. And then in the mail today, or maybe it was yesterday, I got this lovely notice, postcard. And it showed that the fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six is projected to be one hundred thirty-one million. One hundred thirty-one million. I, I appreciate this. Very well done. And I appreciate the presentation, gentlemen from Public Works. Very informative, helpful. I like the graphics. And if, if I'm here again, I hope to be able to make a PowerPoint presentation in, in line with your own. So with a hundred twenty-five million dollars or one hundred thirty-one million dollars, surely there's enough money in the annual budget for this project. There's no need to raise our rates. To be clear, I strongly believe, as do everybody I've talked to, that the city should keep the rates the same and the city should pay the extra costs out of the general fund. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, sir. Do we have any other speaker for four point A? Do we have another speaker? Seeing none, I now close the public's comment on second four point A. Now we will move to a five point, public comments. Item, agenda number five, do we have anything, anybody from the public to speak of any? Agenda five, this section is reserved for public comments on consent calendar and items not listed on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Again, the verbal comments may be limited to three minutes per speaker, subject to the chair extending to a maximum of five minutes per speaker. With a total time allotted not to exceed, not exceed forty-five minutes unless the chair extends. Again, any, do we have any audience who would like to speak on? Any comments? Seeing none, public comment section is closed. Consent calendar, six A, I would like to get a motion for, I'll give it to Ms. Kunya for.
For agenda item number six A is the consideration for the approval of the November fifth, twenty twenty-five regular planning commission meeting.
I need a motion for?
I move to approve the minutes of the November, November fifth planning commission meeting.
Seconded.
Yeah, we are moving seconded, so now electronic voting?
Apology.
There you go, there you go.
Live voting is now active. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Think all votes have been received by those in attendance. And the motion passes three Y. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Before we begin, item number seven A, I need to note for the record that I will be recusing myself due to conflict of interest. I have a property interest within five hundred feet of the subject property under agenda item number seven A. And under the Political Reform Act, I am required to step down from participating in or voting on this matter. At this time, I will turn it over to the Assistant City Attorney for further direction.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and members of the Planning Commission. There is a lack of quorum on this item due to the chair's conflict and the absences. And due to the lack of quorum, no action can be taken on this item. And the item will be moved to the next planning commission meeting on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-six. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll now move to item eight A, report from designated commission liaison.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. At this time, I have no report for the commission.
Thank you, Ms. Kunya. Moving on. A report from planning commission members. Any report? Mr. Chowhan?
Let's see. Had a great Thanksgiving. Sometimes, sometimes we look at life as half-full. But you know something? We're blessed to live in this city. It is a great city. Yes, we have our differences of opinion, but it still is a great place to live. I want to thank the staff and colleagues in the commission for the work that we do together on this commission. And I wish you all a happy holiday or, I used to say, I grew up in England, Merry Christmas. Whatever is appropriate, but next meeting will be in January, so everyone have a great holiday. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Chowhan. Before I close this meeting, I would like to make an announcement. Santa's Lay Day at the CCPA, again, this is a yearly event. So this will be on Saturday, December sixth, twenty twenty-five, from eleven AM to two PM at the Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts, eighteen, one eight zero 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 Park Plaza Drive. So there will be games, crafts and entertainment. Flyers available around the, around the city offices and, at the, and the website. And we would love to see you there. So if there's no other comment or question, I now adjourn the meeting of, the regular planning commission meeting of December third. It will be duly adjourned.